Welcome, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll do a prayer by Pastor Iyers and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance as a roll call.
Let's pray. Lord, I thank you for this evening. I thank you for the men and women that commit their time and their efforts to lead our village. And, Lord, I pray for them, that they give them wisdom and guidance. And we'll give you all the praise and all the glory. I pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Iyers, very much. Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes, sir.
Jones?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Here.
You have the minutes from the October 15th regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
Yes. On the very first page there, the whole topic of the sign and the GoFundMe page and the donations came into $52.50. This says that the remaining $1,750 matched will be put in the $2,018 budget. We all voted yes for that. I did not, never voted yes to do that. Somebody asked me, can we put that in next year's budget?
Yeah.
And that was said yes.
I asked that question.
It could be put in next year's budget, but we never voted on that.
That's true.
And I would never agree to that.
I thought we did because I repeated it twice.
We said, well, let's look forward to see what the sign looks like and go from there.
Yeah.
And we never voted on it. One time did we ever vote on that.
I didn't read my minutes.
We did, that we would give up to $3,500 on the sign.
But this is as we're gonna do the other $1,750. We're gonna match that next year.
Oh, no, that was not said.
Right.
I don't think it was said.
Ron said, so if we want to add that, we can put it in next year's budget.
We'd wait and see.
Yeah, we'd wait and see how it goes.
This is, we all voted yes and approved it.
Yeah, I didn't get that part.
So, do you want to delete that statement?
Well, it's not true. I never voted yes for that, and I won't.
I agree with you.
So, take it out.
Okay. Anything else? Additions or corrections? Thank you, Eric. We'll have a motion to approve if you want to.
You can wait till next time. I'll rewrite that and put it in.
Approve with re-removal of that selection. I need a motion to approve.
We want to approve the amended minutes.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
I want to see the amended minutes first.
Pardon me?
Yeah, we would want to see them first.
You can bring them to the next meeting.
Well, thank you.
Can we just delete that part?
Normally, what I always did was we approved the minutes with the correction.
Yeah.
But if you don't want to approve them tonight, Cheryl, that way, that's fine with me. So, I guess we're just gonna let our motion lie.
And I'll have them next time with the correction.
So, going on to the bills list, you, um, while we're talking, um, do you have any questions about the bills? There's two, there was one on the table tonight, too, an additional one with your papers.
I have two questions. E.J. Prescott?
Still getting the big meters.
Okay.
They're all except one so far.
So, that should be hopefully the end of these. And it should still be around $1,200 for the last one. Then the fire, we dropped about $8,600.
The first one is kind of donation funds for the tower. The second one is new how much that we had to order this year because we're a ten-year life cycle.
Van work fire equipment, $11,000.
$9,000 of that was grant money from Bureau of Workers' Comp. That was for cancer barrier hoods and a new gear washer and gloves. So, we only paid a little over $2,000 out of that.
What kind of washer?
New gear washer.
Well, how much does that cost?
I think that was about six, seven thousand of it.
Do you currently have a gear washer?
We do.
I thought you did.
But it's like 20 years old.
The Community Action Commission for Ten Grants. Is that a house demo?
No, it's part of the G.I.S. and Asset Management thing. Sorry.
Are there any more questions for?
Ferguson Water Works, $2,588.
Those were some meters, too.
Software Solutions for $6,700.
That's your annual fee.
If, if nobody has anything else, I move we approve these bills and ask that the financial officer starts doing this printout like she used to instead of like this. Does anybody else agree with me on that?
Yes, agree. I talked to her about it.
Oh.
It's like 30 pages long. I mean, I had one on my desk this afternoon to read through before the meeting, and I brought it with me to pass around so someone could look at it individually.
I looked at it quickly, but it's not a chance to really look at it.
I mean, I hate to give everybody 30 pages of approved bills, but...
Well, even if we went back to the other style that we used to always have.
That was another type of software on your computer. I don't know if you...
I'll ask him if it's compatible.
Okay, anyhow, I move we...
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Going on, you have minutes in your packet from the nuisance board meeting of October 10th and the 25th. We were just looking at a couple of properties to get them cleaned up. Does anyone have any questions about either of those?
I like to comment on Crook Millar looks a lot better. So, that was...
Yes, yes, yes.
That was from the nuisance board, right? That was...
Yeah.
And they're not done yet. Have we seen all these?
Yeah.
Yes.
Looked so nice.
Yeah.
Nolte's and Crook Miller just look absolutely wonderful.
Yes.
Very happy with those two.
Maybe we should call, instead of calling it Nolte's anymore, having that name related, we should call it the West End Park Property or something.
Come up with some beautiful name, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's other places I noticed around town getting cleaned up, too. So, it's nice, every little bit helps. So, then we go on to the park board minutes from October 17th. And park board member, Mr. Hartz here, in case anybody...
There's nothing spectacular. Things are wrapped up. How's it goes now? And, and, uh, and then, if anybody has any kind of sport or activity, because, you know, we're working on the idea of parks, day in the park is, is it, but we need bona fide ideas as far as activities are concerned. And I think we've settled on a date at the end of June.
It says that you'd like to, you're proposing to have a day in the park on June 29th of next year, and you're looking at doing a 5K run walk. You'd like to have various sports tournaments such as volleyball, three-on-three basketball, wiffle ball, or softball. I know there's even more things you could have with disc golf and, you know, other things at the park. And they'd like to have a band or a DJ for the evening along with some food vendors, bingo in the pavilion, a local vendor to sell their products, a couple bounce houses, horses and ponies, and such things as that. That sounds like a wonderful event. So, you need help. Volunteers, anything. People to organize the events.
Volunteer?
I think we're checking with other organizations, too. Maybe the Eagle, the Chamber. We want to make this a low-cost, fun day in the park for everybody, different activities. So, I think it's a good idea for Hicksville to have, and it's just starting to become, you know, the planning stages of it. But, uh, I know the Chamber's been to a meeting and they're receptive for it, so things are starting to come around.
And I see that the park got 17 reclining chairs from the Auburn Pool for $10 each. And I would like to thank Mike Barth for that because I think, Mike, you had something to do with, that you found out that those recliners were being sold and tipped the park off, so...
I did. Yeah, I did.
I think you did.
No, I didn't. I wanted to get their slide.
Oh, the slide would have been nice.
They had a huge slide over at Auburn at the park that I grew up in, and it's closed now. And I think they went over to check on that to see what kind of shape it was in, and it's not in very good shape. But then they had, showed them the chairs there and kind of picked up on that idea, so...
Well, that was great. Because I went to the park this summer swimming, and they had like three recliners, and they were, that's the first thing everybody grabbed when they got there was claimed one of those. So, do you know if the cracks on the tennis courts are repaired yet?
I do not.
Oh, I just wondered. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, with all this vandalism that's going on down there, and this is more than once, they've said that because of the cameras, they can't really identify. It's just kind of a ghosty picture. Why don't we get some better cameras?
They're really good cameras. I think they're, I'm not sure where the vandalism's being done at, but all the cameras are right on the park building itself. They don't have them actually in the dugouts or inside the fenced-in areas. Is that where the vandalism is happening at?
Uh, some of it's on the, on the old A.D. ground, that, or that.
Adventure Alley?
No, McDonald's.
McDonald's.
Oh, McDonald's.
They actually have it taped off right now.
Really?
Yeah.
The Rocket. That's what my grandkids call it, the Rocket.
I know they have three megapixel cameras down there, so I know they're...
But they checked with the people, and they said, you need to upgrade. And that kind of ticked us off because all the money we spent, and now we can't get a good picture of them, wasn't real.
Can we use a body camera on there?
But they're...
Put a couple trail cams up or something.
Happy to bust one right there.
Yeah.
Well, you just got to stop. I mean, you look back, just the years that I've set at this table, of how much damage has been done down there, it's, wow.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. We will go on, then, to the council committee reports. Are there any committees that have reports?
The police fire EMS, we met and did some interviews last week with the police chief. Still waiting on some callbacks, references, and we'll have a recommendation at the next council meeting and have minutes for everyone for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you for the time spent on that.
We had 30-some applicants, interviewed three applicants.
Any other committee reports from council?
Mayor, the Hicks TV minutes were put on the desk tonight.
Oh, okay. You have in on the table tonight, the Hicks TV minutes from the October 13th meeting. Looks like they're planning to get some new equipment. They submitted their 2019 budget. There was an update from Aspen T.A. Does anyone have any questions for Mike Barth or Bill back there?
We're always trying to come up with new ideas to tape or bring different programs to the community through MediaCom and Hicks TV, but if anybody has any ideas, please give us a call or call the mayor, and we can maybe take a look at it.
We did a program last week. I did a program with Chris Palmer from the Defiance Prosecutor's Office, just a really informal discussion in here on guardianship here in the Hicksville area. And so, if there's any topics like that, that anybody wants to just have a program on TV about what your organization's doing, or anything that we could show on Hicks TV, they would be willing to videotape a program like that. And I think United Way would like to come and do one, and some other organizations. We did it with Humane Society last year, so they'll do that kind of stuff if you come up with an interesting topic. Okay, there's no other committee reports. We'll go on to the administrators' report.
Sorry, I'm crunching my cough drop.
You're kind of busy picking up leaves.
Yeah, I was gonna say, people don't need to call and tell us they have leaves out. At this point, we're planning to be out till December 7th, weather permitting. Things suddenly get started dropping, so we barely got the old Tuesday trash route done today. We hit every street once, and then there was people bringing out after we went by, but they'll, we'll get them later this week. So, weather permitting, we'll try to hit like the North Main out to Haver Drive area tomorrow and then start the South Side. But we know they're out there. We'll get them as quick as we can.
Any questions for council?
Real quick, though. I have some recycling plant this week, and they're picking the asphalt grannings down there, pretty good-sized pile. What do we do with those when, because I know Billy had mentioned, people come in there and ask if that's for sale.
Oh, yeah, everybody wants them. We use them for berm work, some pothole work, but no, I don't want to get rid of them. They come in handy. I know we got a ton of them, but they come in handy.
I got a thousand ton over there to my place if anybody wants to buy some.
All right. Going on, then, we'll go to the solicitors' report.
First thing I have is ordinance 2018-14, first reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance. Got questions you can answer, Cheryl, about that. Next is Resolution 2018-24, it's a third reading by caption only as a resolution opposing State Issue 1. It's on the ballot tomorrow.
It's on the ballot tomorrow. That's the third reading. Troy, that was the third reading.
Yeah, oh.
Does anybody want to pass that?
So, move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yeah.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
And then last is Resolution 2018-27, first reading by caption only, a resolution for the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a farm lease with Roger Zedeck the Fourth for the farming of the vacant land in the Hicksville Industrial Park and declaring an emergency. And that's the lease, our lease is up at the end of this month. We have the term lease.
Thank you.
I move we suspend the rolls.
And I'll second it.
Oh, that was the fir-, okay. Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Second, third readings, a resolution 2018-27, by caption only, a resolution for the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, enter into a farm lease with Roger Zedeck the Fourth for the farming of the vacant land in the Hicksville Industrial Park and declaring an emergency.
I just got a question on that. Is that the same price we, I know it was bedded, bedded, it was bed.
No.
It's cheaper.
It came down quite a deal, simply because we're running out of land out there.
Okay, I was just curious.
About half a acre. We're down to about one, two and a half acres.
But I mean...
That are farmable.
Yeah.
What bid did we get? I guess I can look.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else for Troy? Does anybody have any questions, or Troy, do you have follow-ups on anything we were waiting on?
No, I mean, I've been working on some things that Craig sent over, on some policies and stuff, and I got them partway there, but quite frankly, I'm kind of waiting to see who the new chief's gonna be so we can get some input from them. There's a body cam policy that we're gonna need to have once we get up for training and stuff on that. At the last meeting, Craig had mentioned the ride-along policy and getting that in place, and he sent me over some things, and I started putting it together, but we should definitely have those wrapped up pretty soon.
Well, we were, are down to the department. Sergeant Doctor, do you have anything you'd like to report to the council?
Yes. Can I break it up?
I was gonna ask you if we should take the microphone.
No, no. I went to the doctor on the first, and they gave me two more weeks with the boot, and then they're gonna start weaning me off of it, is what they said. So, I'm not gonna need surgery. But Patrolman Stose, he's been here for about a year. I'd like to see him moved up to Patrolman One. He's been a good officer for us, so I would really like to see that happen. Everybody on the department has done and completed their firearms qualifications for the year, and has also completed all their TASER qualifications for the year. They're kind of a little different. The department has three different models of TASER, and you have to be qualified on each model to use it. So, we have everybody on all models, so it doesn't really matter now. I don't know if some of you probably saw the video of Officer Bostick volunteered to take a shot, so we're pretty happy with that. We updated all the key holders for businesses in town for our new reporting system. If there's anybody that we missed or anything, we'd like to know so we can make sure that they're in the new system. I think we got everybody, though. And then if we could get, on the village website, the fact that we have a, I thought it was on silent, Alice Instructor on the department now. Chris Taylor, we're able to get with the state, get with Dallas program, and we got Chris Taylor certified as an Alice Instructor, able to get his renewed. He's been teaching for a little while in that. It's really a great program, churches, businesses, school, anything like that, it'd be great.
Did he do St. Michael's recently, or did they?
No, he, we, he, he actually got certif-, recertified the day St. Mike's did theirs, so it wasn't early enough. But he's able to do those now. I'm looking forward to doing that kind of stuff, actually. And then, like, Eric, you probably know what's going, I don't really want to talk about that right now, but since the last council meeting, 23 junk vehicles were moved from the verbal warning, after they were given verbal warning. Two people received citations for the junk vehicles, and three people were recently given two-week notices. We started with 86 cars, and right now, we're down to about 40. It's, we got a kind of a master list now, really kind of changes the way we're keeping track of them, and, you know, part of the reasons, part of the difficulty is getting hold of people. And the other difficulty is we're finding people are just taking their car and moving it somewhere else, so we're having to track them down, you know, keep, keep an eye on that way. The other, the other big question we keep getting is why we're not out at the school doing the traffic control out at the school every single day. I've been asked, I don't know how many times, and I did something about it on Facebook today, but we've been kind of focusing on the bus stops and the bus routes. To me, the bus routes and the bus stops are a heck of a lot more important than directing traffic out there to school. Besides, I think, now that the year's going on a little bit, the, the traffic out at the school is not near as bad as what it was the beginning of the year. And then the policies I gave to Troy, we actually have that training. It was scheduled from before, but that schedule, the body camera stuff is for Wednesday. But the body cameras are all mounted, hooked up, everything's ready to go. The training is scheduled, and then once the policy, then, of course, whoever's the chief, what they want to do with it, but it's all ready. That's all I got.
Well, I would recommend that Officer Patrolman Stose be, be upgraded to a Patrolman One. Looks like you got a good review, and you believe he's coming along well?
I do.
And, and you think he's ready?
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree with most of the mayor's recommendations for officers to be upgraded.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Did anyone have any questions for Sergeant Doctor?
Thank you.
Looks like things are going well. All right, come on up. Fire Chief Kramer?
Quite a bit to go over tonight. We applied for two different AFG grants. One is we reapplied to the AIPAC, we got denied this year, so we reapplied again next year. And we applied with defiance and city defiance and some of the other departments in the county for an AFG grant towards radios. And also, the State Fire Marshal Grant opened today for radios. I'll be filling that out and getting that submitted. We're submitting that countywide to hopefully increase our chances of getting it. Runs for the month of October, we had a total of 32. 27 of them were rescue and emergency medical service. We had one hazardous condition, no fire, one service call, two good intent calls, and a false alarm call. We've got some things coming up. I'd like to thank everybody, hope everybody had fun at the carnival this year. It was packed as usual, as well attended. Christmas for kids, kids' applications are out. They're available here at the City Hall or next door at the fire station, between 8:00 and midnight, over there, 8:00 to 5:00 here. They're due in December 7th, and we'll be handing toys out on December 17th.
And if people, some people I know make monetary donations to you because they drop them off in our offices?
Yes.
And, and if people want to make a monetary donation, what is the best way to get the money to you?
Either here or next door at the fire station.
Okay.
There is cans around town for loose change and stuff. There will be a live drive coming up. I believe it is... I'm not sure when it is.
Do you know where that will be held?
It will be down on, at the tax place on...
Obano?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is the 17th.
December 17th?
December, no, November 17th.
November 17th.
Next Saturday.
I guess that would make sense. On Moon Street.
Should have their own downs. This weekend, on Saturday, the 10th, we have the Feather Party next door. Bingo, it's $4 card, $10 for three cards. Doors open at 4:00 P.M., food will start serving at 4:00 P.M., and bingo games start at 6:00 P.M. The prizes are turkey, turkeys, hams, cash, and door prizes. And then Sunday, starting at 5:00 P.M., we have the Veterans Dinner at the Catholic Church. And Mayor, was you gonna mention yours in your report, the, at the Veterans Park?
The activities there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can do that in my report, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Yep.
And I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
And I know that bingo party's a lot of fun.
It's usually packed as well.
Yeah.
We appreciate all the support we get from the community.
Scott, your department, your auxiliary do a great job. I mean, the holiday party was very, received, packed, left the private fund, turn around and do another party the next week or two weeks later. You did a good job.
It gets to be a busy time of year, of course, with everything going on, but we try.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You are busy. Thank you. And then we will go on to, nothing else. I, I have the park on the agenda, but nothing else for the park, I assume. All right, we will go on to the fiscal officers' report.
I have the October reports for you, the fund status, the revolving loan, our income tax report, utilities, mayor's court. Also have a list of liquor permits and the MediaCom franchise fees. Also have a list of liquor permits and the media com franchise fees.
The income tax collections, I'm happy to see them up 8% for the year. Are there any questions for Cheryl about any of our reports? The franchise fee report even for the cable TV, it looks a little higher than normal. So I guess we're down to the mayor's report and, so it's not in my, the EMS newspaper article is not in my packet. Did you put it in their packets?
I sent one at the club.
Yeah, I know it was, I just, I guess I thought maybe it would be in everybody's packet, so I didn't have to explain it, but I'm not, I'm not ready to like do that off the top of my head then. It was just a way that some EMTs were.
Offered training.
Yeah, offered training to get them to come to a business, so. So then I wanna, we gotta thank you from the beautification, and I passed it around the table, for the share that the village contributed to the gator that the beautification got with the 75 gallon tank on the back. It's very nice. It'd be nice, it's powerful, so it's got a wand on it that also can like clean up under the trees uptown when we need to, during the summertime when the birds that, some people hate in the trees make a mess on the sidewalk. So anyway, it's really nice. And then it says CIC invitation, that's the investors' dinner that Mike and I is gonna be going to Wednesday night for the investors of the economic development. There are plans for Christmas in the village. The annual Chamber Christmas in the Village is going to, it's gonna be a fun event for the entire community. The event is planned for Saturday, December 8th at 5:30. Businesses are invited to participate. There'll be a parade. There can be golf carts, walking or floats in the parade. There'll be carriage rides around the village. You'll meet uptown at the Huber Opera House for cookies with Santa in the community room. New this year, a Christmas movie will be showing at the Huber for the whole family to enjoy together, to get us in the Christmas spirit. So put that on your calendar for December 8th at 5:30 at the Huber. And you get to see Santa. And then we're telling everybody that there's a new polling place tomorrow. Everybody needs to get out and vote. You may or may not be aware of it already, but at the Community Christian Center on Hicksville Edgerton Road, Hicksville Village Precincts A, B, and C, Hicksville Township and Milford Township will all vote there this year. And I heard on the news this morning, if you can believe it, that the polls are open 6:30 to 7:30, 6:30 AM to 7:30 PM. So everybody needs to get out and vote.
That's a long ways to go. It's gonna be a long walk. They should have had that in town.
Yeah, some people can't find.
Right.
That's a mistake.
That's kind of a.
Well, you need to let the Board of Elections know that because they're the ones that did that, not us.
Been brought up.
Okay.
Obviously aren't doing any better.
Yeah, it was in the paper about people have, you know, they had a thing in the paper, press the news line.
Yeah. The comment was made, for those who are watching TV, that the Community Christian churches are ways out for people to get if they don't drive, so you need to let your Board of Elections know if that's a problem for you.
We used to go to school.
Yeah.
I guess that's a security.
They were definitely closer places. So then we'll go to a CRA update. You know, folks, we've been working on the CRA for it seems like a year. And it's just ridiculous, but I asked Cheryl to contact them, to contact the State of Ohio Development, Ohio Development Agency or whatever, and ask them, you know, where we're at with this. Their reply is of October 31st is the petition is still working its way up the chain of command here for approval. I just can't believe how long that's taken.
Yeah, I talked to Jerry Hayes like two weeks ago, I was in a lunch meeting with him, I just said something to him. He was under the impression they were just waiting for the director or somebody to sign off on it. He talked to somebody and said they got whatever else we had to correct and they basically just needed the director's blessing and it'd be good to go. So that's coming up on Tuesday.
This has just been crazy, crazy. So then we've discussed the commodities in the past. I don't know if any of you have heard from any more residents in the past month. If you, Kent would like to know tonight, so he needs to prepare for either to end it January 1st, like we notified people was a possibility, or to keep it. And I know Reverend Irs, you do a great community outreach with commodities too, at the old Assembly of God Church on Edgerton Street or Fountain Street, or I don't know what your address is, but I mean, maybe someone would have some questions for you in this discussion, but, you know, council members, you, what do you want to do? Do you want the village to continue giving commodities away?
Let's get some input from the Reverend. Do you feel as though we are amply supplied, or should we continue doing what the village does?
Well, we got, we have four different places that give away food, right? You guys are aware, right?
Mm-hmm.
And it seems like a lot to me. And if it, if it can be combined, or if we can work together, I think it's always a better process to help the people. I've been meaning to stop down and see exactly what kind of commodities are going on, and I think it's this Thursday, is that right, Kent? Yeah, so I'm gonna try to stop down and see those commodities, but I believe those same commodities are given away, or same items are given away at a couple of different places. It seems to be overkill for me, but then again, you know, if it helps people, it helps people. If we can work together, that would be something I'd really be interested in doing, and I've been meaning to stop with Kent and really dig in and see if there's some way that we can work together and continue the same amount of product going out, and if we can work together, that'd be awesome.
Didn't you say, Kent, that nobody else can do this except the village?
What you.
What we're set up for, yeah.
Yeah. CPAC can be worked with, they have some different requirements, I think, but.
See, we're with Seagate, so.
Seagate, excuse me.
I did have one person come into my office after the last council meeting discussion and told me that he would really miss it if it were gone, and that's the only person I heard from.
I have had people, but I didn't, I wasn't aware that they were giving the same product away. That's what, they like what they get uptown.
What's it cost us?
Gas and just like the day, you know, it was going about four and a half hours. Then we have to unload it, but that's.
Dump truck, that little dump truck to Toledo. Toledo on back.
Where and there on the.
That's gotta be expensive, running one of them little dump trucks up there. I mean, I'd like to see it go, but if there's a need for it, then it has to stay, if there's a need.
Well, like you said, if we could all work together, that would be great, so they don't have to go to four different places. And, yeah.
The person that came to my office, I asked him if he would please go down on a Thursday night and check out your food giveaway to see if, because he'd never been to yours. And to see if he could, you know, like be satisfied or happy with the items that he can choose at your place.
Our items are anywhere from fruits and vegetables, depends on what day it is, obviously. We have fruits and vegetables and too many sweets sometimes, but then again, we'll have some staples that we're able to give away once a month, such as spaghetti, spaghetti sauce, vegetables, applesauce, those kinds of things that we order from Toledo Food Bank. Now, we're able just to afford to be able to give it away once a, once a month. So they come in, they fill out their paperwork, which is very minimal, just name, address, phone number. And that's basically, the paperwork is just for, in case Toledo Food Bank has like a callback and giving away something that needs to be returned, and that's, that's the only reason the paperwork is there. But we're able to give that away every, every month. We serve from anywhere between 30 and 40 families almost every week.
Kent, if we give it up, ever get it back, if it's.
I had sent him a letter and the lady had called back. She goes, yeah, if you ever want to get started back up, it's pretty simple. You just have to fill out all the paperwork.
And you do it once a month?
Yeah. Mostly what I've heard from the people that use it is they get things that they can't get at Christ Covered or elsewhere. They've been getting eggs pretty regular.
We don't get eggs very often, sometimes, not very often.
We've been getting frozen meat most of the time, and then like frozen bean berries.
Not even very often at all.
So I think that's why they like ours, because they can't get some frozen and dairy-related stuff elsewhere.
Somebody told me that there's a sign up at Christ Covered and they don't know how long it's been there, that they're not taking any more clients. I haven't gone to check that out for myself, but I mean, if, I don't know why that would be either, but.
Refresh, remember, how many people are we serving now, approximately?
I think last month we had like 35 families, but 47 people for, somewhere in that neighborhood. We've had a lot of older people that are no longer with us in the past couple of years. That's why our numbers are kind of dwindling. We picked up a few, and some younger people.
Can I ask what the requirements from Seagate, what they ask of you?
People fill out a form, it's like an honor system on your income level.
They ask your income level, yeah.
But you don't have to check that box.
I would, I am pretty confident the people we get would meet their income levels, I mean, usually they want to give them out. It's really all just, we don't call up to ask for, I want this, this, this.
No, no.
We just go up, whatever they got on hand that day, they, they send back, so it's, and we get the canned fruit, canned vegetables, the pastas. This time around, they sent quarts of milk that people probably don't have to drink on the day we hand them, but they sent quarts of milk. That's the first we've ever gotten, though, well, whatever. But we got eggs again, and shredded cheese, and frozen bean berries.
You have a freezer, right, that you put them in?
We've got two freezers and a fridge freezer. Sometimes that's not hard enough.
And do you have to throw anything away?
The frozen and, well, if dairy stuff's way expired by the time it's done, yeah, we'll get rid of that. We usually don't have a whole lot of waste.
And you want a, you want a decision tonight?
Would kind of be nice to know, 'cause if you were thinking of getting rid of it first of the year, I'd given everybody a notice, you know, last month, I'd give them another one this Thursday, and then they would know December is it. I mean, if you want to keep it, I don't care.
I think we should keep it because of the meats, and that's my opinion.
Well, what about the other places that distribute food? I mean.
Senior centers give for 60 and over.
They get from Seagate also.
Yeah, I'm not sure where they got their.
Yeah, they got, they have a little box, a lot of the dry goods and those kinds of things. But that's, that's for the senior center only.
And you don't feel it's abused at all?
Not the people I've seen come in.
Okay. I think we should keep doing it.
But there's no way of combining forces with church and then having them distribute it? I mean, I still, I don't think we should give it up either, but if it's a question of, you know, the day we're giving it out, the day to give it out for us and fill out the paperwork.
Well, the paperwork doesn't take me all that long.
It's just somebody going after it.
We'd be going to get it and unload it there, and they gotta get it bagged. I mean, I, I don't know how you guys do it.
But Tisha does it down here, doesn't she?
Yeah, she'll, she'll spend a couple hours tomorrow getting stuff bagged up, ready for Thursday.
I know the people that I see uptown, up by the EVB church, I see at your office.
Well, I'm sure there's a lot of overlap, that's for sure, but, you know, if there's different things, there's different things.
Yeah.
But if there's any way that we could, it seems to me we'd be taking a load off the city if we were able to combine and, and bring it to our place on Thursdays, I'm just making a suggestion, bring it to our place on Thursdays and we give it away. And to me, that gives a load off Kent a little bit and the space and the time that it takes away, whether it's possible or not. And by no means, there's no competition here, you know?
No, no.
By no means, there's no way there.
How about we, and we will vote on this, so I guess I could make this a motion. We keep what we have in place, and in the interim, Kent and the Reverend can get together and see what they can put together and see if, if Seagate will allow the products that Kent gets to go to the Reverend.
Well, I used to have it set up.
He's gonna have a way to go get all that stuff.
We would come into town.
They don't let me in.
They would have, I'm just making this number up, I mean, it varied every month. I was gonna say they had 30. We would, we would unload stuff there with my paperwork. They would hand it out, they home-delivered some of it, we don't. And then they would have some people pick it up, they would fill out our forms, and they'd have to run their forms up to me to add into mine. Now, Seagate never really knew that's what we were doing, I just counted it all as mine.
And this thing.
But then we were unloading half of it there and then half, three fourths at our shop and half of it there, which added more time and people tied up.
Reverend, do they deliver to you?
Toledo Food Bank does. We're part of the drop program. They found out that, they pick up all the things such as, for example, in Defiance at the Walmarts and the Krogers, and they bring it all the way to Defiance, and they bring it all the way back down to us. And they thought, well, maybe it might be smarter just to have them drop it off. So as long as we order, I don't know, a couple hundred pounds, a hundred dollars worth a month, we're part of the drop program. So every week they drop off who knows what. We don't have no idea what it is.
It'd be nice if they could deliver what we.
Yeah, we would, we would have real problems running all the way to Toledo.
Yes.
We wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, and, and that, that is part of my statement of you two can work that out in the interim, and, and possibly the village can get their hands away from it, but we still won't lose the service to the community. But I make that motion that we retain it and let these guys work it together.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
When's it start?
I don't know.
Okay. All right.
Making a motion, Cheryl?
No, you can't. You can't yet. I don't know if you, we have a new sign out at the police department, I don't know if any of you've seen it or not, but.
Looks nice.
Looks real nice?
Wait, that wasn't.
Kant has, got a new plaque on the rock for U S Argon. And you know, we have our big celebration coming up in town Sunday, actually Saturday at the library. There's a gentleman that's bringing in his World War I memorabilia and collection, and he's gonna be in the uniform and everything. He will also be attending the commemoration for the World War I Centennial that's gonna be held at the Veterans Memorial Sunday at 1:00. And it's gonna be a real nice event. We have a special speaker coming from Maryland, so hopefully he'll come. The Cornerstone Church there by the Veterans Memorial is gonna serve lunch from 11:30 to 1:00. People can park in the parking lot there, and other parking will be available at the Mennonite Church on the corner of Arthur Street and Spencerville somewhat. So there's also gonna be a couple golf carts around to help transport people if they feel like they're parking a little far away and can't walk that far. And then I have concerns about the weather. I think it's supposed to be maybe in the 30s by Sunday. And I think that might be a little too cold to be outside for the service, so. Well, unfortunately, you won't see all the beautiful wreaths and everything there, but I guess if, if you're up to it, you could go to the memorial. There's going to be a new piece of granite installed with new wording on it. They'll have the wreath laid there, and then come over to the church or whatever, but this is just going to be a last-minute call as to whether it's, you know, maybe we'll suddenly get a great day and it won't be a big deal, but if it is, you know, cold, don't let that stop you, because we'll probably move it inside. Is there anything else I haven't said about that?
The only thing, thing that worries me more than anything is people, it'd be nice, because I think we're going to have some out-of-town folks coming, so it would be nice, especially in that area, if people try to not mow their grass out in the road. I mean, we're going to do as much cleaning as we can on Friday. We know I do so much. Pick up their, you know, just try to make town look a little nicer, I mean, if you're having a lot of people coming into town. I know some people don't care what other people think, but...
And...
People can kind of take some extra care, I think it would be nice.
We'll be recognizing the one hundred anniversary of the Edward C. Smart American Legion in town, so they'll be recognized. So I think we'll have a really nice event, so try to stop by the library on Saturday and down at the Veterans Memorial at one o'clock on Sunday, but go eat at the Cornerstone Church if you want to, that's open to the public too. And I think that takes care of that note. And I'd like to thank Tribune Printing for donating the printing of invitations and envelopes and stuff that we sent out for that commemoration, and we sent them far and wide, so it'd be interesting to see who comes. We've invited relatives of the families of the World War One veterans, so. When's the Christmas cruise through start?
Sixteenth, that's, sixteen or seventeen. That's Saturday.
All right.
Seventeenth, Saturday.
Yes, we have a week yet, but that's, they've been working awful hard on that, and that is going to be one big light show this year, so keep that in mind.
Begging for volunteers, you can call, I think, and/or they have an application form online that you can fill out.
Yeah, it is really easy to sign up online to work. I did that last year, and they really do need a lot of volunteers, some inside and some outside, so you don't have to be out in the cold. But Denise up here at Alliance Tax Service, you could always walk in there too and probably volunteer if you don't want to go online, so. And I know we have some, do we have some athletes at the school that have had some good accomplishments recently, like cross-country?
Cross-country, Michaela Sullivan and Tiffany Chiapetta, they were supposed to run last weekend at state. They both qualified for state, but due to all the rain we had over the weekend, Columbus got it all, or Hebron got it all also, and so it was postponed due to flooding, so they'll run this upcoming Saturday at the state.
We wish them good luck.
Another thing would be Micah Trader for golf, or the girls golf, they had the Northwest Zone District meeting for the girls, Division Two girls, and she was nominated and selected as a division, a second team all conference or all district in the Northwest Zone. It's kind of, kind of hard to get first team when they're competing with Shelby and LCCs in our division, and they were first and second in state.
Wow.
Yeah, only top six get first team, so, yeah, she, she got second team, which is a good accomplishment, so.
We congratulate them and wish the runners good luck. Anything else?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.